Wonderful, all right, welcome to the special meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. It's Monday, May 11th, and we apologize for the delay, but we were just making sure we had technology up and running. We will go ahead and begin with a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a problem, I have no audio.
All right, and we have Supervisor Yuler join us via Zoom call, and we will start with item one, which is our update from our county executive, and it's the
You had audio before.
Placer County's local variants COVID attestation written submission. So we will start, it looks like, with Dr. Sisson, or?
So there's really two things you're going to hear about today. Dr. Sisson's going to give an update of kind of just kind of currently where we're at.
But specifically regarding the Placer County attestation efforts that took place really through the past week, some of the direction the governor provided to us the middle of last week and the conversations that took place over the weekend. So what we want to do is kind of walk through what that plan looks like, and then be able to kind of discuss it, answer any questions you might have, and look for approval of that plan moving forward. So I'm consistent with a letter supporting that draft that you have in front of you. So I will turn over to Dr. Sisson, she can go through the programming aspect that she's done over the last week and what took place over the weekend.
Great, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Dr. Sisson, thank you for joining us today, we appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. So yeah, thanks for pulling together this special meeting of the board. We're having some technical difficulties. All right, thanks for pulling together the special meeting of the board to discuss a health officer attestation to obtain a local variance from the state health department related to reopening businesses. So today I come before you seeking a letter of support from the board to accompany the completed COVID-19 variants attestation form for Placer County. Submission of the attestation form and supporting documents allows Placer County to receive a local variance to move more quickly through stage two of California's roadmap to modify the stay-at-home order. Before formally requesting a letter of support, I'd like to describe how the attestation aligns with our local strategy and what it entails. When I presented to your board on April 21st, I noted that thanks to our community, sheltering in place was working to flatten the epidemic curve, and that we could expect a new normal as Placer began to emerge from stay-at-home orders. You'll recall that I proposed an emerging framework for a phased reopening contingent on readiness criteria. When I presented to this board last week on May 5th, I noted three main points. One, Placer's local health officer order had expired, moving us solely under statewide orders from the governor and state public health officer. Two, the statewide order would be relaxed to allow specific stage-two businesses, for example, expanded retail with curbside pickup and associated manufacturing and supply chains to open on May 8th. And three, Placer could be ready to move quickly through stage two to allow additional businesses to open pending specific state criteria. The state released the specific criteria to receive a variance last Thursday, and I have good news to report. Placer County is well-positioned to receive a local variance to modify the governor's stay-at-home order. Our success to date, coupled with deliberative planning, allows us to move more quickly through stage two. I spoke with the California Department of Public Health on Saturday afternoon and expressed an intent to submit a variance attestation. After walking through each criterion and our plans to reopen, I was instructed that Placer met the variance requirements and could submit our attestation form when it and the necessary supporting documents were complete. I do want to clarify that Placer County cannot proceed with allowing later-stage-two businesses to reopen until the variance attestation form is posted by CDPH on its website. The timeline between attestation submission and web posting is unknown. The attestation is a statement from the Placer County Health Officer that Placer County meets nine state-defined readiness criteria to move quickly through stage two. These nine criteria are: one, epidemiologic stability; two, protection of stage-one essential workers; three, testing capacity; four, containment capacity; five, hospital capacity; six, vulnerable populations; seven, sectors and timelines; eight, triggers for adjusting modifications; and nine, our plan for moving through stage two. I won't go into detail on all nine criteria here, but I do want to review a few highlights. Our COVID-19 prevalence rate is holding steady. We've more than doubled our testing capacity and have the capability of testing even more. Our hospitals have robust surge plans, well above required levels. Stage-one essential workers have ongoing access to safety guidelines and protocols. We've ramped up containment capacity or contact tracing and can scale up even further. In fact, this morning, we began training nearly 50 employees to become contact tracers. And we are in regular and frequent communication with skilled nursing facilities to ensure they have sufficient protective equipment and to offer technical assistance. While I'm pleased that we're eligible to enter this new phase of reopening, the process to request a local variance demands that we articulate metrics that would serve as triggers to tighten modifications during stage two. With reopening, more Placer residents will come into close contact with one another. As a result, we expect that cases of COVID-19 will increase, along with hospitalizations and even deaths. You'll recall that a major goal of sheltering in place has been to flatten the curve and avoid overwhelming the healthcare system with a surge of cases all at once. Not overwhelming the healthcare system will remain a major focus of ongoing monitoring as Placer gradually reopens. As such, several of the key metrics public health will review frequently during stage two to determine if tighter restrictions may be necessary to protect the public's health from rapidly increasing disease are related to the capacity of the healthcare system, such as hospital census, PPE for healthcare workers, and infections in healthcare workers. If any of the metrics reveal an urgent concern that has the potential to overwhelm the healthcare system, I will be in contact with the California Department of Public Health and local leaders to discuss whether it is necessary to return to a previous stage of reopening. Under a variance to stage two of California's roadmap for reopening, certain businesses can reopen if and only if they adhere to strong safety practices. These business sectors include destination retail, including shopping malls and swap meets; personal services, limited to car washes, pet grooming, tanning facilities, and landscape gardening; office-based businesses, although telework remains strongly encouraged; dine-in restaurants, although other amenities like bars or gaming areas are not permitted; and outdoor museums and open gallery spaces. Placer County staff will work through our existing community networks, including Reopen Placer, to share this plan and the latest guidance with stage-two businesses that are reopening. The safety practices required for reopening include each facility having a written worksite-specific COVID-19 prevention plan, training employees on COVID-19 prevention, including self-screening at home for symptoms, and not coming to work if they're sick, using face coverings, screening employees for symptoms before they enter the workplace, utilizing physical distancing, frequent hand washing, and regular cleaning and disinfecting. While the local variance allows for additional stage-two sectors to open businesses that fall within, I'm sorry, while the local variance allows for additional stage-two sectors to open, businesses that fall within stages three or four of California's reopening plan are not permitted to operate anywhere in California at this time. Such stage-three and four businesses include personal services such as nail salons, tattoo parlors, gyms, and fitness studios; hospitality services such as bars and lounges; entertainment venues such as movie theaters, pro sports, gaming, gambling, and arcade venues; indoor museums, kids' museums, and gallery spaces, zoos, and libraries; community centers, including public pools, playgrounds, and picnic areas; in-person religious services and cultural ceremonies; nightclubs, and concert venues; as well as festivals, theme parks, and hotels and lodging for leisure and tourism. Again, those are all stage-three and four activities that are not allowed at this time. In summary, the state as a whole has eased into stage two of a phased reopening with a loosened statewide order on Friday. Now, Placer County is eligible to move fully through stage two sooner than the rest of the state. I want to reiterate that once the variance attestation is submitted, Placer will not be considered to have been granted a variance until the attestation is posted on CDPH's website. I look forward to continuing to work with business task forces organized by our CEO's office to support the adoption of best practices for a safe reopening. Businesses may not reopen until they have a written plan to reopen safely. We do not have to choose between public health and the economy. We can care for both if we reopen gradually and safely. At this time, I'd like to ask your board to consider providing a letter of support to move more quickly through stage two of California's roadmap to modify the stay-at-home order. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Sisson, I appreciate the update. Supervisor Holmes, questions please.
Thank you, Dr. Sisson. The 50 employees in training for contact tracing, how soon would they be available to start doing their work?
Yeah, we anticipate that they could complete their training within a week.
Okay. And then, how, the businesses that have a plan, who oversees that as far as making sure that they have a plan in place?
Yeah, it's a self-certification process, so, but they do have to make that plan available to their customers and employees.
So it doesn't have to go through the county, it has to be on, they're posted at their place of business?
Correct.
Okay. And let's see, what else was there? Oh, do we have enough PPEs to handle, or are people that are involved in the hospitals and healthcare?
We do, as part of our attestation, our hospitals are providing letters of support, and those letters of support do state that they have adequate PPE and the means to secure additional PPE as required.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, and then I'll see if Supervisor Yuler does, because I've got a couple of questions, and I can't quite see them just yet. So let me ask a few questions. Posted by the, the plan has to be posted on the website by the CDPH, right?
That's correct.
And we don't know when that would be, because I read the attestation, it said that either businesses in this phase could open up as early as May 12th, which is tomorrow, or when it's posted on the website. So have any other counties had their attestations posted on that website?
They have not.
Do you anticipate it, have they said how long they anticipate it taking? Because my question would be, you know, we might send this out, and then they may not actually, they'll just wait and not get it posted on their website for a week.
Actually, I might be able to add a little bit of information here. First of all, we had heard, although I haven't confirmed this, that Eldorado County might actually have an attestation that will be posted soon. I'd also mention that Sutter County submitted their attestation packet on Saturday. They heard back from the state today. So from what I can tell, of course, I'll defer to Dr. Sisson, because she deals with these people on a regular basis, but it appears that they are at least responding quickly to these requests.
Right, that they've heard back from the state, but it's not on the website as of yet.
Well, no, and I don't know that part, but what I can tell you is at least the response from the state has been very quick so far.
Right, I mean, they met with Dr. Sisson on Saturday afternoon, which we appreciate. Did you have any other, do you have any other input on that one, Dr. Sisson?
I do not know what the state anticipates the timeline being between submission and posting. They have not provided that.
Okay. And then, has the governor stated when he anticipates moving into stage three, opening up of those businesses?
When? No, the governor has not provided a timeline for that, other than in comments over a week ago, he stated that stage three was months, not weeks away.
Months, not weeks. It doesn't help a lot of our businesses.
That was in a press conference over a week ago.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions. Supervisor Gustafson, and then we'll take Supervisor Yuler. Did you have some?
Yes. Thank you again, Dr. Sisson. I know staff worked throughout the weekend to get this prepared, and really appreciate all the time and energy that's gone into this. The self-certification forms that businesses will be required, do we have those already available for the businesses?
We do.
Okay, and then?
We do, and they will be posted very shortly. I believe, once we submit the attestation to the state, we'll be posting those guidances so that businesses can begin to prepare, although we don't know how long it will take between the submission and the posting by CDPH. We can at least get the guidance out to our businesses so that they can be prepared once the state gives us that green light.
And then, do we, have we already established which office of the county will be handling those receipts, and knowing that we have those on record and are ready to go with those businesses?
Right, they are not required to submit their plans, they just have to have them completed, and they provide them to their employees and post them at the business, but they do not have to submit them to a particular office of the county.
Okay, okay. And then echoing Chairman Gore's question on stage three, a lot of our businesses, obviously, in the tourism areas of the foothills, our small communities very heavily reliant on lodging, it's hard to, for them to understand that there's a greater health risk in staying in a lodging facility that has proposed some pretty stringent guidelines versus destination shopping malls and retail. So that again continues to be a question. Just watching the crowds this weekend in and around Lake Tahoe, the weather was beautiful, people were up, there were clearly lots of people using facilities, but nothing open. And so we start, we continue to be concerned about restrooms, public health and safety, risk factors, when they're there in an uncontrolled manner versus a controlled manner. And I just want to continue to do whatever we can at the county level to put forth a set of criteria for lodging and hospitality that surpass the state, so that maybe we have a chance to reopen those in a reasonable timeframe. Two, months would put us with no lodging for the entire summer, which would be devastating, devastating not only to the lodging, but to all of the other businesses that survive that way. So anything we can do, any guidance you hear about that we can encourage those lodging properties to practice and put together plans, they are more than willing to do that and go the extra step to make sure that they can reopen sometime soon.
Thank you. Supervisor Yuler, any questions for Dr. Sisson?
Yes, thank you. First of all, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you very much. So I want to follow up on Supervisor Gore's questions regarding timing. So we submit this, this request for the acceleration into phase two, let's assume for the sake of discussion that it gets granted. What does that mean? What does, what is the net effect of that actually? How will we see that manifest on the streets of North Auburn, say?
Yeah, so right now, the only stage-two businesses that are allowed to operate is curbside retail and manufacturing and logistics. So if we are granted this variance by the state, then we can have the later-stage-two businesses that I listed. So that includes dining in restaurants with modifications. It includes certain personal services such as pet grooming, tanning salons, car washes, landscaping. Let me find, let me find my list. It also includes shopping malls. Offices would be able to resume work, although we still encourage telework. And then outdoor museums and other outdoor spaces like galleries would be allowed to open as well. So that's how things would look different if we have this variance. If we do not get the variance, then we are limited to curbside retail, manufacturing, and logistics until the governor and the state health officer expand their orders to allow full stage two.
Okay. And so assuming we get that variance, how long is there a certain amount of time? Is, what are the metrics then for us to get to stage three, or wherever stage it is for our lodging properties and our other entertainment venues? What is, do you, does the governor prescribe that you have to stay in stage two for a certain amount of time before you can even submit a letter of variance for stage three? In other words, why couldn't we tomorrow do another one for stage three?
So there is no variance process for stage three. The governor has indicated that the state as a whole will move into stage three together. So at this time, counties can only get a variance to do full stage three, and it is, I'm sorry, full stage two. We, no county can move into stage three. That will be a statewide decision, is what the governor has indicated.
And is it under stage three or stage four that we get to the lodging properties?
Lodging is in stage three. It's the, it's the large venues, concerts, that's stage four, the large gatherings, but the hospitality is in stage three.
Thank you. In regard to the contact tracers, what exactly is it that we are intending to do with the contact tracers? And if somebody establishes that somebody is sick and has the symptoms or whatever, and that person's not in the hospital, but rather at home, what are we doing?
So the contact tracing involves a phone call from public health to that person who has tested positive, and we find out everyone, everywhere that they've been since 48 hours before they develop symptoms, or 48 hours before their positive test if they did not have symptoms. And so we would then figure out where they've been, who they've been in contact with, again, that's close contact, so it's being within six feet for 10 minutes or longer. So we would determine who those close contacts were, we get their contact information, and then we follow up with every single one of them to determine if they have developed symptoms. And then, our goal in this next phase is to test all of those close contacts regardless of whether they have symptoms or not. Any close contacts with symptoms would be asked to isolate at home until their test results are available, and close contacts without symptoms would be asked to quarantine at home until their test results were available.
All right, so all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Yuler. And I, just a point of clarification, so I had asked the question about stage three from the governor, and the governor said weeks, not necessarily months, but I guess that all depends on how the state is doing. So I certainly want to move through stage two, absolutely, I don't think there's any disagreement. I think there's further conversation about what we do after this, because it's great that we've opened up some businesses, but then my concern is, who, I think somebody brought up the question, what's essential and what's not essential, right? Like if, and if a business can keep people safe, just like we're asking people to do at these small retail shops, like we've asked them to do at Home Depot, then why can't somebody who's taking care of dogs take care of personal needs for a human, right, by using safe measures? So I think that's sort of the question of the next step. I would love to move forward with this step, and then we gotta decide what we want to do with the next step versus waiting and waiting and waiting. Anyway, that's my commentary. But why don't we do this? We need to take public comment, and we're going to take public comment on this item, as well as the closed session item, which we may or may not hold closed session if we have an item to discuss during closed session. We will take public comment. My understanding is we have 14 people who are in the queue. 14 people times three minutes is 42 minutes, which is long public comment. And so I am asking folks that you call in, you make your point succinct. We're going to give you no more than three minutes, and happy to hear from you, we want to hear from you, but at the same time, we have a lot of people who want to call in, and we also have other meetings this afternoon that were scheduled that some of our board members still need to attend to doing regular essential business. So we will allow you that three minutes. You can call in, if you can wrap it up sooner, it means more people can talk, but I would like to limit our public comment to no more than 45 minutes, which means we're wrapping up total public comment by 3:15. And with that, we will go ahead and open public comment, and we appreciate your input. And the first caller is coming. Good afternoon, please state your name for the record.
This is Mark Spoor. I live in Tahoe City, and I have 30 years' experience in public health as a physician. I, I think your plan for opening up to stage two is appropriate and should go forward. However, up here at the lake, we have a unique, special situation because we have a lot of tourists coming in. This weekend was particularly bad, we're overwhelmed with tourists coming up here in violation of the governor's stay-at-home order. I noticed your letter to the governor asked him to lift the stay-at-home order, and this is a very bad idea. There's been no effective enforcement of the stay-at-home order, and that is the primary danger to us up here, is people traveling from areas where they have active coronavirus infections taking place, coming up here and infecting people up here. People are out on the trails, they're in the grocery stores, they're on the beaches, they're at the gas stations, they're in the takeout lines for the, for the off-sale restaurants. I would ask you to please protect us, please put in some effective enforcement of the stay-at-home order, and it is not appropriate to remove the stay-at-home order for nonessential tourist travel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
Hello?
Good afternoon, please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Doug McBibb. I live in Roseville, September 9, 5, 6, 7, 8. I'm in favor, as much as anybody else, at least as much as anybody else, of opening our towns, country, county, state, the country, all as soon as possible. But what is required? I think specifications are fairly clear. We have to have few or no new cases, and we have to have a sharp decline in the infection rate. And without testing, without adequate testing, we just don't have that information. We can't know where we're at. We don't know what we've gotten in Placer County. The testing rate, according to your website, the information that's available there at least, has been terribly anemic. I'm not blaming the county for that. I, I think that it's a national problem and a national disgrace. But until we get decent, a decent amount of testing, which my understanding and reading is that in Placer County at least, there'd be something in the order of 3,000 tests a day, we're nowhere near to knowing where we're at, and we're never going to be able to open up. We can't, if we open up too soon, we run the risk of having recurrence, re-flare ups of COVID virus, and it will just, it will prolong this agony way into next year. If we do it right, then we have a chance of kind of getting open sooner, but we can't make the false choice between public health and lives and the economy. They're one and the same. And I think that it is, it is extremely important, the role of the county government is to provide strong leadership, just as the state government has been doing, to provide strong leadership to fill in for the drastic and terrible leadership we've gotten from the federal level. It's just been a disaster. So we're counting on state and even county to provide really strong and good leadership, follow the science, and do it right. When I hear about any talk of suing the governor, suing the state to reopen earlier, that is tremendously upsetting to me. We need to pull together. This is, this is the existential challenge of our lifetimes, and yes, we may not have many cases here in Placer County, but we could, if we do it wrong, we will have lots more. I think that, I just want to hear the end of I think that I just want to hear the end of any kind of talk of going it alone, opening independently, suing the governor. Like, I just don't want to see my tax money spent that way. That's it. That's just insane. We need to work together on this. So do what you can to put pressure on higher levels of government to get more testing. Do keep the pressure going as much as you can to pay people literally to be home, to sit on the couch and watch Netflix. That's what we need to do. I know it gets boring, but if we don't do it this way, we are going to pay the price down the road, and we're going to really wish we had in the in the face of an oncoming pandemic that looks like we're doing too much at the end of the pandemic.
Thank you.
We didn't do enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
It's Patrick, huh?
Yes.
Captain Curtis, I live in Lincoln. As far as I can see, Placer County's Phase Two plan is similar to the governor's statewide plan for reopening businesses. The steps needed for a county to self-certify they are ready to move further into and through each phase as declared by the governor were outlined and are attainable. The county Board of Supervisors and the county's health officer both have to agree the county has the healthcare capacity as well as the testing and track and tracing ability to handle hospital surges. The county has to have established health guidelines and safety requirements for each business type allowed to reopen within each of the each phase of the state's plan. Placer County does have plans for Phase Two reopening. Other states have told workers, when the boss calls you to return to work, you must go or unemployment benefits will be cut off for refusing work. Is there a county plan to protect workers who don't feel it is safe for them to return to work because of personal health, transportation, or childcare issues? Have we completed testing of all the skilled nursing and group homes in the county? Do they have enough personal protection equipment? Are guidelines for later phases in the county in progress? What is Placer County's expectation for when Thunder Valley opens or the Tahoe and Reno casinos? I'm concerned that counties that move to reopen before the state phases could be in danger of losing state and federal emergency funding as well as the manpower that is needed to meet testing and tracing requirements during this health crisis. By declaring the county is no longer in a state of emergency and is able to reopen, requests for emergency funds could be denied. Can we afford to take that chance now or over the long haul? Why be in a rush to sue the governor, which requires the county's legal department to spend time and funds to research and prepare for trial? If you force the governor to end the state of emergency for California, federal funds to the entire state could be cut off. After all, the president wants my deceased husband's $1,200 of stimulus money back. What we do affects others. I suggest it would be better to focus on reopening using the state's self-certification process and getting our plans ready for the next phases. Who knows? We might find some flying ponies. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Hi. I'm Kathy Moore. I just wanted to say I appreciate you, Bonnie Gore, so much, and Kirk Yular, and everyone on the supervisors. I do hear the other callers that have been calling in. I am a biologist and epidemiologist, worked with HIV. We are not in an epidemic. I would like to see us move forward. If the state of California is in if the governor's in violation of the state law, we need to perceive that he's in violation of the state law, and that means that he is not responsible for any more of these edicts, that he keeps changing the goalposts and keeps changing things for citizens. I am not going to submit to contact tracing, and I'm not going to get testing, and I'm not going to do vaccinations. I've seen what that's done. I've worked at the U.N. I've seen what that's done in other countries. We are a free people. Those are unconstitutional laws, and I just want to make that known, that I want Placer County to open. And if he is in violation of law, we cannot be okay if he's in violation of the state law, then we're still going to follow his all of his rules through the health officer. We are not in an epidemic. We are the state is not in an epidemic. So I just want to support the Board of Supervisors and get things open, get things open by this Friday, everything open, no restrictions. Get our children back to playing. Get get life back to the way it was. It can be done. We need to focus on the real facts of this virus. It's a coronavirus that has been around for a long time. We have studied coronaviruses since the 70s, and focus on the scientific facts and data and not on the blowed-up media that's going around with this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name.
Hello? Yes, my name's Stephen Moore.
Please.
I'd like to start by thanking you folks for being stern with the governor. And please continue with the process of suing Avon Newsom, if that's on the table, for his overstepping his authority and basically destroying California's economy. Homes are being foreclosed on, cars are being reposessed, while criminals are being let set free, and our cities, families are being put out in the streets. I will not allow myself or my family to be tested or vaccinated for COVID. And as far as contact tracing, the virus had better have a mortality rate of more than 1% to throw our constitutional rights out the window. Please look at what's happening in Germany. They are rioting, not like the picnics we're having on the state Capitol steps. These people are really violent, and I really hope this is going to be over before it gets to that point here in California. This has never been an epidemic. For every year, 6,000 people died from the seasonal flu, only 2,000 in California this year from COVID. So I'm asking the supervisors to please open California 100%, but no restrictions. If you are not being stern with the governor, as you are, I would be packing my bags and leaving California right now. I was telling a dear friend of mine that the COVID is almost behind us. He disagreed and told me that this is the calm before the storm. I pray that he is in correction that, and I thank you, each and every one of you for doing the job. Thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. All right, we'll move to the next caller. That's okay. If somebody's already said what you had to say, no problem. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
This is Samir Tumo, Board Chair for the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. I was wanting to inform the board that this morning, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, on behalf of 300-plus businesses in the Tahoe region, submitted a letter to the governor requesting that the tourism industry be allowed to open in a safe and thoughtful manner. We've outlined a series of protocols and safety measures that go above and beyond what the state is requiring for other hotels to open throughout the state. We also, in listening to other callers talk about the flood of tourists that are coming to Tahoe, that is a reality, and that is exactly what's happening. And unfortunately, because the lodging properties and other businesses who face tourism are not allowed to be open, we're missing a great opportunity to communicate with the tourists starting from the time they book their stays with hotels to the time that they come up, arrive at the properties, and they can be educated, they can be informed, they can be provided PPE. There's a whole host of measures that the lodging and tourism industry could provide that would support the goals of keeping our community safer. Without those being open, people are being forced into illegal camping, other means of staying that simply are not safe for the community. So we implore the county as well as the state to permit responsible tourism managed through the organizations that have the ability to communicate with the tourists. The other key component of our request is that the entirety of the health picture for residents of Placer County and particularly Tahoe region be taken into into account. Not only the COVID-19 impacts, but the mental health, the domestic violence, the suicide, the housing insecurity, job insecurity, and shelter insecurity that are causing a great deal of both mental and physical health consequences to our communities. If we remain closed through the summertime, we will see a very large percentage of the local businesses fail. That is a forever thing. We will see more and more members of the community leave, leave other to go to other areas where they have economic opportunities. So we are very conscious of the health implications and the health challenges that are associated with both opening and closing. We believe that opening in the near term will provide a much better, a much healthier and safer environment for those at Tahoe. We cannot stop the tourists from coming, and we need to be in a position to support a healthy environment as people come up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Please state your name for the record.
Is this me? Yes, yes, ma'am. My name is Robert Rogers. I live in Lincoln, California.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, that I have been a Placer County resident since 2000. I'm originally from Chico, a Northern California native. But I think I read about this in the Sacramento Bee, and I think the whole issue of suing the state is really counterproductive. I think whether it's negotiation or discussions to work with the state to tailor the measures for the COVID mitigation, that makes sense. But just suing the state, or suing the governor, I should say, is really going to be just a waste of time and effort and money, I believe, because they already he has a law on their side just by his power as governor. By the time it probably if we're successful in these mitigation efforts, maybe some of these restrictions will actually be relaxed by the time this winds its way through the court. So all that time, effort, and money would have just been wasted to more maybe more productive purposes towards increasing testing or being successful in some of the metrics that are have been laid out to to open facilities. Right now, we have very few cases that kind of shows the the efforts have been successful. And you have two things at cross purposes is really is the efforts to mitigate the spread of the virus, but the need to for commerce and to open up our economy that if we make a mistake, as is kind of done really nationally, and let this get away from us, then I think the efforts to to open the economy, you're going to have even more of a backlash if people are spooked about secondary outbreaks of the virus. And ultimately, it's the consumer that's going to decide really whether we're going to open the economy or not, and their competence, that they're going to be safe going out and about. That's my two cents, I really think. Just the time and effort of going through the courts is it's it's an exercise that you're not going to win. Actually, put forth effort, put that same amount of effort, time, and money into measures that will help help solve the problem rather than just legal legal theater. That's 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 pretty much what I have to say in summation.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Kathleen Crawford, and I live in Roseville, California. I carefully went through the variance application, and I find three areas that I have questions about or concerns about. First one, in the testing capacity section, it mentions that the goal is to test 10% to 20% of the skilled nursing facility residents and staff, which I believe is very low. And that recent outbreak at the Auburn convalescent facility is an indication of that being a congregate space that needs far more attention from our county. The county's testing capacity is improving, but it is not yet at the level that would be able to be a reasonable reassurance, at least to someone like me, that the testing capacity is in place. On the secondary level of the contact tracing, again, this is something that is not currently in place. Dr. Sisson's report this morning that they're currently training 50 county staff, that was very, very reassuring. But again, that won't be in place for another week or two. It seems to me that in the variant variance application itself, she indicated that part of the expansion plan would be the state of California providing some additional trained staff. Well, when will the state of California be able to do that? And again, I think that's an unknown timeframe. So therefore, again, I don't believe that the contact training tracing isn't currently in place, and that's what we need. And then the last section was the COVID-19 containment plan, and that was just answered with to be completed in the future. And I consider that insufficient. If there is supposed to be a section on that COVID-19 containment plan, then I would expect to have seen that. I do want to reiterate the comments earlier that the self-certification process for businesses is it's a wonderful plan. I mean, I looked at it online. It has lots of details and checklists. But self-certification has a big drawback in that it really depends on people being willing to comply. And as you've heard on the conversation today, and I'm sure you've seen in the news, there's plenty of people who have no intention of complying, and that puts all of us at risk. I agree that we should not lift the stay-at-home order for nonessential tourism because it basically, the more people stay within their smaller communities and areas, the more contained the virus can be and exposure can be limited. I think that we need to proceed slowly, and I'm hoping that you will continue in that fashion. I also want to support those who say that this talk of suing the governor just sets up a dynamic of us versus them that is not productive, not helpful, and again, is something that would be a waste of taxpayer money. So thank you very much, and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Annie Bowler. I I know that you had conducted a flash poll last week, and it found that 56% of residents in the county would wanted to open more slowly. And so I don't really understand why you're pushing. I understand this concern for business. I do understand that. But I just don't understand why you're not listening to your constituents so much. I see that there's not enough testing going on nor contact tracing yet in place, and finally, that containment plans are not prepared. And so those are all signs that we're not really ready to do this. I'd like to, as a business owner, open, but I'm not seeing this as something that we're ready to do quite yet. So as the owner of the flower farm, right now, we're doing wine pair dinners to go, really being careful with what we're doing, and they're going well. We're making money, our costs are low, it's simple to do. Opening a restaurant, if anyone who's run a restaurant knows, it's a very difficult business, and profit margins are very thin. If you're if people are not confident to go out to restaurants, you're going to lose money. There's going to be extra expenses. You can only be able to open at half half speed. You're going to have to have people sanitizing bathrooms, all this stuff, wasted food. It is if you're recipe for disaster, frankly, until you have people's confidence, you've got to listen to the polls of the people. Finally, I'd like to say that I think this lawsuit is a waste of time. We really need to work together. We need to communicate and cooperate with one another and work together to solve it. Yes, our numbers are low right now, but they don't necessarily are they going to stay that way unless we are cautious and careful moving forward. I agree with numerous of the callers who spoke earlier that said people- Yes, our numbers are low right now, but they don't necessarily, are they going to stay that way unless we are cautious and careful moving forward. I agree with numerous of the callers who spoke earlier that said people aren't wearing masks, people are wandering about all over the place. I think your job right now is to provide strong leadership, help businesses to set up those plans to be successful, know that we want to open, but we've got to open wisely. And that means you guys have got to provide leadership. As a restaurant owner, I had no idea about the fact that we had this whole big plan that we should be setting up. You need to be emailing people and saying, hey, this is what you've got to do. We're going to be opening here soon. Start setting this up. How do we do it? I don't know, as a restaurant owner. I don't know. Let us know what the plans are. Talk to people about it and get it going so we do it right when we do it. Thank you so much. I do appreciate your time and energy. I know this is a very difficult time for everyone, and I understand you're very concerned for business, but I'm afraid, like someone else said earlier, it's going to come back and we're going to end up with more people sick, and our businesses are going to be hurt worse. Do you understand that? So if we do it more slowly, we've got a chance to do it right, and then we'll be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Patricia Jensen. I live in North Auburn, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board. I participated in the flash vote concerning the governor's and our county's stay-at-home orders. I am one of those in the majority who participated and was worried that things will open up too fast. The vote showed that Placer County residents want to go slow. During this past week, the governor has given us and the counties the criteria for opening businesses and for leaving our homes for more than essential needs. I'd like to commend our public health department for the way that we are moving out of our stay-at-home order situation. Nothing will be perfect, but I think we are proceeding in the right way. I ask the board to listen to our public health professionals, both at the state and here in Placer County, about how best to proceed. I do want to say that I understand that there is a motion that we should sue the governor, our county should sue the governor for his actions. I think this is wrong. I think another person who spoke said cooperation is the way we need to go. Suing the governor will cost this county money and will serve no purpose. We are starting to move forward at a slow and measured pace to return to what we probably will call our new normal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Barbara Smith. I live in Auburn. Thank you for taking my call. I want to thank Dr. Sisson for her detailed plan today. It gave me a lot more confidence than when I heard her speak last week. It seems we have a better idea of where we are going and how we're going to implement the plan. I think it's really important that we rely upon science and data to move, if we move too quickly from stage two to stage three, we could bring back full-on shelter-in-place orders, and as some other callers have mentioned, that would be even more devastating for businesses that would have to close once again. I'm also concerned about listening to the callers talking about the influx of people up to the Tahoe area wanting to use those facilities. I understand that people are crazy to get out of their houses. I'm crazy to do that, too. But to be honest with you, I really believe that it's public officials who continue to sow doubt and confusion among us and who use inflammatory language like telling the governor to get out of our way that adds to this problem. And this idea of suing Governor Newsom is politely put by the political grandstanding by Mr. Euler. I'll say unpolitely that it's a misguided attempt to stay relevant following an electoral defeat. Mr. Euler was not re-elected to the Board of Supervisors, and I hope that the board who is present knows that we expect you to be responsible with our tax dollars. Please don't waste my tax dollars and the tax dollars of other Placer residents on a fool's errand, and that's what it would be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Ashley Hafiz.
Go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to thank everybody on the Board of Supervisors and just share my thoughts. I'm personally opposed to the contact tracing. I don't feel comfortable with revealing personal information about where I've gone, who I've talked to. I feel that that's a blatant violation of, you know, our rights, violation of privacy. I don't believe that the governor is in his right mind to ask that of us and force that upon us. Our forefathers have fought so hard for the freedom for us individuals, and the government should be working for us and maybe setting up guidelines, but they can't be forced down our throats. And yes, we, you know, should be able to make our own choices. If people want to open up slowly, then let them have the choice to say, okay, it's not right for my business, but somebody else down the street can do it, and that's their own personal choice as a business owner. You know, this long list of things that we can and cannot do is really just hurting our community. It's ripping us apart. You know, you see, you know, neighbors are fighting over the fence screaming, hey, you know, stay back six feet. You know, that's horrible. And, you know, I just can't stand this, you know. As a community, we need to be able to just say, hey, we have common sense, be clean, wash hands, you know, follow CDC, but we all have personal choice. And that's pretty much what I have to say. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Please state your name for the record.
Carolyn Jasper. I'm speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. In the meetings and the processes that got us to this point today, often, or not often, but a couple of times, the death rate in Placer County, yes, relatively low, was compared to the unemployment applications and the other economic hardships. And that was a good argument in and of itself. However, what I did not hear was any discussion of those who survive coronavirus but then suffer from strokes, and in the studies that I saw, or not studies, excuse me, it was reporting, it was men in a certain middle-aged range, or they suffer organ damage, various organs, which may go unnoticed in children until later. So I would just, when you're making your decisions today, I would hope you would consider health above all else and not the cost, because what the real health cost of those who don't die is horrendous. And that's not being discussed, but it should be factored in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Asad Hafiz. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm Asad Hafiz. I'm from Granite Bay, and, gosh, first and foremost, I'd like to talk about my concern about contact tracing. It just feels like, in terms of as a people, as a community, and as individuals, we're supposed to be living in a free society, it just seems like an all-across assault on liberty. And contact tracing, I don't hear anybody talking about it. If I understand this correctly, contact tracing is a system of monitoring people. So this is, and maybe Health Officer can clarify this, but are we talking about monitoring communications? Are people going to be texting about where people are located, their phone calls, who they had contact with? Are they installing applications to monitor locations? I mean, I don't think these sort of things are really going to curry a good sentiment and good trusting relationships in our communities and among people and among neighbors. And I think this is going to turn our officials, this is going to turn our law enforcement professionals against everyday people. And we're all losing on this sort of transition, because now we have people who are violating life, liberty, and property on the loose. They are off the radar, and now everyday people are getting harassed. This is their number-one concern. This would have terrible consequences for the community. There's so much more that could be said. The medical propositions, your proposals are going more coercive and mandatory. I just think this is atrocious. People are going to have to move and leave so that they could have their liberties elsewhere and have their prosperity and livelihoods elsewhere if our community is not going to do it. Litigation, I think we have reached that point where we do have to litigate as a community to ensure our protections and that things do not continue to get out of hand. I don't know how I'm doing on time. I'm probably close to the end here, huh?
Yes.
Okay. I thank you so much for all of your time and your dedication. I think we have to do this. I think there's no better time than now rather than later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Sandy Harris, and I've lived in Granite Bay for 43 years. I just mainly want to support opening up this county. I think if people have concerns about it, they can stay home and have that choice. And I just, it upsets me that so many people are losing their livelihood and everything else that's going with this. I think we've met the goal of flattening the curve. We certainly are prepared for it now. We've got plenty of respirators and PPEs and everything else that they said we needed, and it won't be such a surprise this time. The first couple of weeks, it was okay to do what they were saying, but I think we've gone well beyond the timeframe that was necessary. So I support opening it up as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sandy. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Oh, good afternoon. My name is Mary Clark, and I live in Roseville. And I'm calling to state, the state of California and Placer County are doing very well in controlling this virus, and I would opt for opening up kind of gradually. We don't know what's coming down. We may have a second wave, and that's going to be more harsh. So, and I don't agree with just opening up right away. I think litigation is costly, and our budget is going to have a problem next year because of this virus, the expenses costing, and the loss of jobs, the loss of business opportunities. So I'm against litigation, and we can't afford to be, we can't afford this litigation. So I think opening up gradually is the best way to go.
Thank you for your-
And that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, it's Bill Holden from Rockland.
Go ahead, Bill.
And I just wanted to call to speak on behalf of some of the businesses in my community and first commend Dr. Sisson for her detailed work, and I think we can all support what she has put forth. I think this has been well-developed. I think there are a lot of businesses in the later stages that have also done a lot of work to come up with great plans to open safely, and I think as long as we're focused on businesses operating safely, we should be able to move forward. The businesses in our community are hanging on by a thread, those that have been closed. And while it is easy for some, I think, to tell them to remain closed, there's no compensation for them to remain closed indefinitely. I think of the hotels that are closed and have so many bills that they have to pay. Those bills continue to mount, and if they have a safe plan, whether it's up in Lake Tahoe area or in South Placer, they should be allowed to present that plan and reopen, hopefully more quickly than the governor has laid out here. So again, thank you for all your work, and if I could just add one aside, the parking lots being closed at the Auburn State Recreation Area, I think have created a major traffic safety issue on Highway 49. I saw it this weekend with people looking for access, parking legally, but too many people end up on the highway road walking around because those parking lots are closed. If they could, if you could do anything to get those reopened.
Thank you. Councilmember Holden, appreciate it. Next caller, please. Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record. Good afternoon, caller.
Okay, this is Bonnie Snedberg in Sun City, Lincoln Hills, and all I would like to say is that I'm supporting the governor's plan. It sounds to me like he's more than willing to work with everybody and listen to their plans as well, and I'm certainly not in favor of suing the governor. Anyway, I know it is a tough time for all, and I've been trying to look at both sides as well, so it's not easy. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Please state your name for the record.
Lisa Larkin.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I am not in favor of suing Governor Newsom over the opening of Placer County. I am a resident for the last 20 years of Placer County, and I am not against businesses opening in Placer County, but they should be opening in a safe way, using science, facts, and have testing in place along with a contact tracing in place. And you guys just did, or somebody did a flash vote poll that took all of the community's concerns, that's supposed to take kind of a slice of how the community is feeling about this situation, and it was pretty much overwhelming that people, in fact, 56% were concerned that things were going to open up too quickly. And I, for one, you can open up all the businesses in the world, and I'm not going to go to those businesses if they're not requiring their customers and employees to wear masks. I am immune-compromised, and for those people to say that you can just stay home, you can't. You have to get groceries. You have to go to pharmacies. And if I go into a grocery store or a pharmacy and the employees aren't wearing masks or they're wearing them around their necks, it does us as constituents no good. So the flash vote that went out was quite interesting in the responses, and it probably wasn't the responses that you thought you should get, but the individual comments as well were overwhelmingly in favor of people being required to wear those masks. If you want to open those businesses up, make everybody wear masks, allow everybody to be comfortable to go back into those businesses. Those are my comments, and I hope you vote no on suing Governor Newsom from somebody that just was voted out of his position. And it's a frivolous way to spend tax dollars when you can just be taking this effort and making the opening of Placer County safe instead of wasting money. Thank you.
Next caller. All right, no more callers. Thank you. We will end public comment. Look at that. We did that in less than 45 minutes. Appreciate those who were brief. A couple of things, and then Dr. Sisson, there are a couple of questions, but I do want to state that resources are available on the county's website for businesses to prepare to get open. We've been working with our chambers, our economic development team. Those resources are available for any business that's looking at how do I get ready to get opened up, so I want to make sure people are aware of that. And I appreciate that people want this to be phased in. The poll also said that people still want us to open up, and 50% of the people are okay, they could ride this out for a year, but the other 50% of people cannot just ride this out for another year. And I think it's very clear that we want to do this safely. Our businesses want to do it safely. Our community wants to do it safely. Dr. Sisson has indicated that we have a plan that works, that we can get approved by the governor, and it includes our protocols for testing, et cetera. So I appreciate the work that she and her team have done to get us to this place so that we can open up to this next phase of Phase Two, and then we continue to have conversations about what's after that. Let's see. Were there any other things, Dr. Sisson, that you wanted to?
I had a question for her, if she would.
Okay, so Cindy, ask a question, any other questions, Dr. Sisson, at the same time?
Yeah, Dr. Sisson, we had a number of callers comment on the timeline on the preparation of the containment plan, and maybe you could give us some understanding of what you think that will take to address. Looking at those questions, many of them felt to me like we're well underway there, but I want to make sure I understand the next phase of that.
Yeah, so let me provide clarification on, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, on the containment plan specifically, a drought containment- Yeah, on, on the containment plan specifically, a draft containment plan is well underway. And, and I wanna share why a containment plan was not included with the attestation. So I would draw your attention to the actual attestation statement that I, as the public health officer, have to sign. And it states in, in the latter half, "If a local COVID-19 containment plan is submitted by Placer County, I certify that it was developed with input from the county board of supervisors slash city council, hospitals, health systems, and a broad range of stakeholders in the jurisdiction." So my concern is based on the timing of preparing this containment plan that there was no way we could have a vetted containment plan that had been shared with all of the parties that, that need to be part of such an important document before submission of the attestation. So we, we are developing a draft plan and it will be shared with the board, with the cities, with hospitals, health systems, and a broad range of stakeholders. But I am not willing to certify that I have done that if I have not.
Thank you. That's great clarification because I know on every one of these headings, you've given us a report where you are already addressing all of these issues. So I just wanna assure the public that we're well underway in preparing for that containment plan with cooperation. The other question I had for you is the number of cases in eastern Placer County. I think it's been a couple of weeks since we've had a new case, positive case up there, but I wanted to see if you, if you could jog my memory on that.
I do not have the breakdown in, in front of me, but you can see the, the cases by each of our three regions, South Placer, Mid Placer, and Eastern Placer, if you go to placer.ca.gov/coronavirus.
Right.
And then click on data. But I, I believe that is correct that we have not had new cases in the Tahoe area, but I'm not, I'm not positive without those numbers in front of me.
Yeah, I think it's been over a couple of weeks. And, and why I bring that up is just there has been a tremendous concern, as I've reported before to my colleagues, that tourism is, is a challenge and it's already occurring and there's been lots of visitation from second homeowners and, and seasonal residents as well as tourism. And so thankfully, because I do see people, maybe not everybody, but a lot of people following those protocols, we haven't seen any new cases. We've been at 11 for at least a couple of weeks. So I just wanna assure you, I, I heard the first speaker. I know the first speaker who spoke to us today. And, and I need to continue to encourage our community to look at those statistics and, and recognize that even despite some of the visitation we've had, we've been keeping those cases well under.
Thank you. Let's see. Dr. Sisson, any other comments to wrap up from you?
Yeah, yeah, if I could, I'd like to address some of the questions that were raised by residents during the public comment period. Two topics. We, we've already addressed the containment plan, but I did wanna speak to questions regarding testing capacity as well as our contact tracing. So in, in terms of testing, I, I know one caller raised the requirement of, or suggested a testing capacity of 3,000 tests per day in Placer County. What I will speak to is the requirement for the attestation for sufficient testing is considered 1.5 tests per 1,000 residents. And so for Placer County, that works out to be 600 tests per day for our, our testing capacity. As, if you've read the, the draft attestation, you would see that we currently have a capacity of about 750 tests per day. So that exceeds the, the 600 testing capacity required. In terms of testing in skilled nursing facilities, where one caller raised a concern when the, the draft attestation speaks to surveillance of 10 to 20% of staff and residents in skilled nursing facilities on a weekly basis, I, I wanna point out that that is, that is a sampling. It is a surveillance plan. And so the, the way it works is if any resident or staff person in a nursing home develops symptoms, that person would be tested right away. What we're proposing with the 10 to 20% per week is, is a random sample of staff and residents in nursing homes to see if there are asymptomatic cases in the nursing homes. And then if anyone comes up positive in that surveillance, and that would be about 400 tests per week to do 20% of our skilled nursing facility residents and staff. If any one of that 10 to 20% random sample comes up positive, then the entire facility, staff and residents, would be tested. So I believe that this is a robust and aggressive surveillance plan to protect the most vulnerable in, in skilled nursing facilities. And finally, I just, I wanted to make a couple of comments and respond to questions related to contact tracing. Somebody expressed concern that contact, the full contact tracing staff would not be in place for one to two weeks. That is true, but it, it is not concerning because there will be a lag once we reopen. If we do see an increase in cases, recall that coronavirus has an incubation period of up to two weeks. So we will have time to, we already have 15 staff, not 15 full-time equivalents, but 15 staff who are doing contact tracing that are fully trained and can, can handle cases in the next one to two weeks until the new staff come on board. And that's when we would see an increase in cases associated with reopening. So I feel confident that we are prepared on the, the contact tracing. I, I do wanna address that there was a question about when state employees would be available for contact tracing to support the county. And, and I wanted to share that the state launched its online contact tracing training academy last week and 300 employees are currently going through that 20-hour training. And the plan is that 3,000 people will begin that training next week. And it is a 20-hour training that can be completed in about a week. So we would anticipate that we could have state staff in the next couple of weeks supporting our Placer County contact tracers. The, the last point, there were, there were a couple callers who expressed concern about what exactly contact tracing involves and whether it would require installing apps on their phones or monitor, they were concerned about what monitoring means. So I just wanted to provide some, some clarification that when, one, we would not be compelling anybody to install an application on, on their phones, that from what I've heard, any applications would be on an opt-in basis and, and that has nothing to do with Placer County. That, that is related to Apple and Google who are developing those apps. And then when it comes to monitoring, when we speak of monitoring for contact tracing, that is monitoring of the contacts by text message or by phone call to ask them if they've developed any symptoms. So we're not monitoring where, where they go. So I think perhaps we, we need to come up with a, a better term, but it's really just checking in with the contacts to see how they're feeling and if they've developed symptoms so that we can determine when and where to get them tested. And so there, there is no law enforcement involvement with contact tracing. This is our, our public health staff and professionals. So I, I just wanted to provide that clarification. I think that's it.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sisson. Really appreciate that update. Cindy?
I just had a clarification on that last point, Dr. Sisson. And of course, I am assuming without saying that HIPAA-
Sorry. Thought I had it on.
That you follow HIPAA procedures with those folks? So it's, there is, it's anonymous. People do not, you don't report that to others and you protect their anonymity in that?
That, that is correct.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Let's see. So, any, any other further conversation on this topic?
Any quick question?
I see a hand being raised. Go ahead, Supervisor Wheeler.
Just a quick question for the doctor. In these attestations, is there a role that our hospitals are asked to play in certifying anything? What role do the hospitals play in this?
Yeah, so each hospital is asked to provide a letter of support for the county moving forward with the, with the variants request. And we did share the, the proposed language in the attestation with, with our three Placer County hospitals. And we have received letters, I believe they were included in the, in the packet that, that's posted from Sutter Health System as well as Kaiser Permanente.
Great. Thank you.
And I believe each of those letters speaks to their PPE as well as their surge capacity.
Okay. And, and just a quick bit of research I did yesterday leads me to the understanding that in our two south county hospitals, Sutter, Roseville, and Kaiser, our bed capacity, staff bed capacity is 668 beds. Is that sound about right?
I don't, hang on. I, I think that's actually, that is, that is higher than, than what I have. I have 467 plus 24 or 25. So, sorry, I haven't, I haven't done the math on that, but it's, it's, it's right around 500 for the baseline. You may, you may be looking at some surge numbers already. I'm, I'm not sure which set of numbers you have.
No, it was just, I just looked up what, what was their capacity? What was the staffed bed capacity of each of the two hotels? I'm sorry, not hotels, hospitals.
Yeah. And I'm speaking specifically to the, the general acute care beds. So it doesn't necessarily include emergency department or labor and, labor and delivery, for example. So it's, or pediatrics. So it's focused on adult general acute care and critical care.
Okay, and right, and so your understanding is we're at approximately 500 and as of today, we have eight people hospitalized?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, doctor.
Great. Thank you. All right, bring it back to the board. Well, actually, we're here with the board. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Yes, first of all, I would like to thank Dr. Sisson for her tireless work over the weekend and all through this whole time. And I appreciate the comments from board members and the people that called in. I think we've got a plan in place. I hope we can get it going as soon as possible so we can get to the next step. And so with that, I will, I will move to approve the Placer County's local variants COVID-19 attestation written submission.
All right. Motion by Holmes, second by Wygant, County Council.
Yes, could we clarify that that motion, in your packet, in the attestation plan, at the very last page, is the draft letter of support for the board to review? And just a point of clarification, Supervisor Holmes, whether your motion also includes authority for the chair to execute the letter of support?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second, I concur.
All right, and then we'll go ahead and do roll call, please.
I, I still had some comments. I apologize I missed that. Can I do that before I vote?
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yes, and then we're gonna go to closed session, so absolutely.
Yeah. Well, a few comments. First off, these are really trying times for our community and I recognize the diversity of opinion that we have had expressed to us. I mean, I have been inundated, I'm sure we all have, with emails, calls, text messages relative to both this action as well as potentially our closed session item. And I just wanna assure the public that we have heard that people, the vast majority of our public, want a safe, and I emphasize safe, path to reopening. I don't hear any, anyone asking, demanding, well, I hear some that demand wide open, wide opening of our businesses, but I don't believe that's the sentiment of most of us and, and certainly our healthcare professionals. We're following the governor's recommendations on how to do this. The urgency I have is with having a better understanding of Phase Three and really giving some power to our businesses to adapt plans. And I would love the letter, if possible, to also ask for clarification on Phase Three or a subsequent letter to go to the governor asking about Phase Three. And any direction we can get would be so helpful so that our businesses can make plans in moving forward in a safe manner. And again, I reiterate, they're willing to go above and beyond, but they need to understand what that timeframe is. I think what the governor has done personally has been incredible leadership during this time. And no, none of us, not all of us are ever gonna agree with every step that has been taken, but by and large, we've protected our state. We've slowed the curve. We flattened that curve and we've had great results. And for me personally, I honor that and I honor his leadership. And I am sorry I didn't speak up stronger at our last board meeting to disagree with my colleagues, or a colleague who's sitting up behind me. And, and just make sure that, that we know that public health and safety is our primary responsibility and every avenue of sitting here as a board of supervisors. But we also need to take into account the health and safety of people that are without work and cannot feed their families. And we've had suicides and depression and we have other health impacts from not finding a way to safely reopen. And I talked a bit last week about the inconsistency. And so this weekend, I tried to book a hotel in San Francisco. No problem booking a hotel in San Francisco. Nobody asked me if I was gonna be traveling for essential purposes or not. And yet our lodging communities are afraid to reopen unless they have the blessing of the governor. So I, I just understand people's frustration, but there's a real lack of consistency and we have been going above and beyond in code enforcement. Enforcing these short-term rentals has taken many, many hours of time of our staff checking on who's renting, who's not, what their stories are. Are they really relatives? And we get into questions and validations that we can't demand of people. How are they related to the owner? Are they really doing work on the house? Or are they doing an essential service while staying at the house? Or are they just here for tourism? So I wanna commend staff not only for the preparation of this but for all the steps they've been taking to try to, to flatten this curve. And this is a new normal for all of us. We have not cured this virus by reopening. We all have to take personal responsibility. And I think several callers mentioned, stay home. You know, there are other precautions you can take to safely go to stores and grocery stores and take care of yourself with the special hours that businesses have provided, with face coverings, with washing your hands and taking all those steps. And I think it's really important for us to focus on that personal responsibility. It is a new normal and it is not gonna be the same for quite some time. And we, we have to measure every step we take with recovery, health recovery, as well as economic recovery. And it's a tough position for all of us to be in, I think. And we're making our best decisions here and I, you know, support this motion in the second, so.
Thank you.
I just wanna, you know, I'm, all these businesses, the hotels and the fitness centers that are in Stage Three, they're ready to go. They're not sitting around waiting for somebody to tell them what to do. They're ready to go. So somehow, we've gotta get that message out to the legislature and the governor to loosen up and as we go through into Stage Two and Stage Two B, we need to go faster to get those hotels.
If I might suggest, because this is, the packet is for the Phase Two, I would suggest we keep the, the support letter as is. We don't wanna mix Phase Two with Phase Three in the governor's language. Keep it as is, but if the board is so inclined to direct staff to come back with a separate letter to, to address the opening up of hotels, I'm sort of offering a pod, but I'm assuming we can come back next Tuesday perhaps with that sort of letter so that we keep that going.
And I think it's not just hotels. It's Stage Three businesses.
Correct. Right.
It needs to be staged businesses. You can open up safely.
Following these protocols.
That's right. And we've done that for these other businesses, for the Stage Two businesses. Already, the hotels have done that for their businesses. They've already put some procedures into place. They worked with Dr. Sisson on that, I believe. So we need to have those protocols ready for all these other businesses as we move into, move to Phase Three as well and be ready to go for those folks as well.
And the more preparation time they have, the more knowledge they have. I mean, I'm getting requests every day. When can we at least accept a reservation? They're not talking about opening tomorrow, but they're accepting a reservation tomorrow for sometime in the future and they'd like that assurance. They can start to plan for that and, and do it safely if they're gonna be at, you know, 25 or 50 or 75% occupancy because of some of the- If they're going to be, you know, 25% or 50% or 75% occupancy because of some of these concerns, they want to understand that and plan for their future, so.
We can draft a letter.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And as far as the restaurants that are going to be allowed to have dine-in, but they can't do it until it's posted on the health, the state health website. They need to understand that somehow, we need to get the message out to them. And as soon as it's, it is posted, send out a mega email letting them know, go.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and we'll take a roll call, please. Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Yuler?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore? Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. We're going to go ahead and adjourn to closed session, and we'll be back. Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Karen, sorry.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of potential initiation of litigation.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And we're just bringing in Supervisor Yuler as we wrap up. Hi, Herb. All right, we're all back, and we're back from closed session, so we'll ask County Council to report out.
The board met in closed session to consider one item of initiation of litigation. After considerable discussion, the board has directed me to report out that at this time, the board is going to take no action. This concludes the report out of closed session.
All right, thank you very much. And that is the end of our board business today. Thank you, everyone, for making time for this special meeting, and we will adjourn to our next regular meeting, which is next Monday, May 19th. We are adjourned. No, next Tuesday, May 19th.
Or sometime before.
And so now we are adjourned. Thank you.